I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting in order for all those who can't be raised for the fudge. And Mr. Asco, you listen.
I point the leadings to the flag of the United States of America. In the Republic, where we stand is one nation, underground, made of this all with every seat adjusted tomorrow.
Thank you. And breaking for a little call?
Senator Mark Straub.
Here.
Dan Asco.
Here.
John Boyle. Tom Andrew Thomas Hedgeson.
Here.
Our Chair Joseph Diver.
Here.
And Robert Bishop is excused at the moment?
Excused for a moment, yeah. He should be here shortly. Let's see, in two minutes. Yeah, so we have March 25th, 2024. Mr. Asco and Mr. Straub are absent, so Mr. Boyle, entertain a motion from you.
Which one?
Uh, March 25th.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of March 25th, 2024 be accepted as presented.
And I'll go ahead and second on any questions in a minute. Here and now, all in favor? Okay?
Abstain.
We're abstaining.
Guys. Me, Mr. Boyle, yes, you guys abstain?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes for April 8th, 2024.
The chairman, I move that the minutes on Monday, April 8th, 2024 be accepted as presented.
For a second.
I'll second.
Good. Motion to second any discussion. Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, abstentions, motion carries.
The chairman, I move that the minutes of Monday, April 22nd be accepted as presented.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And then we had one for the specialist session, but we didn't have a quorum, so in the sessions, I think we just make these notes for the records since we didn't have a quorum.
Yeah.
So they're not official, we'll just know it's not official. Whatever. Um, okay. Public address to the board, this is the time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting on agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you want to attend an address on the board, at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company's institution you represent. Public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair of the designated may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make that request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. And please address comments to the board chair and be concise. We are meeting in person and making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure of participating, please attend in person. Anybody to address the board this evening?
Are you addressing anything that's on the agenda?
Anything on the agenda or any other matter of the town? I assume you're a public hearing for?
Yeah, we're here for the EverSource.
Okay, alright, great, yep.
Chris Chelney, 126 Barton Hill Road. I just have a question that I didn't think to ask last time. I was just wondering how it was determined to put these, um, splices?
Splice, I see.
Tens? On our property in the Moynihan?
So what I'll do is I'll actually open up to the public at the hearing, and then you have the chance to ask those questions of the group and then of the representatives from EverSource. If that's okay?
Okay.
Okay, very good, thanks. Uh, any, anyone on Zoom? Okay, seeing none. Um, number six, Lakewood Reorganization.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table us to the next meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion to second the table, that's the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
And I oppose, abstentions, motion carries. Uh, appointments and notifications, uh, Mr. Hedgeson.
Uh, I am very pleased to present J.D. Heber as the candidate for Emergency Management Director. If you looked at his cover letter and resume, you would have got impressed if you've spoken to him. Um, for even the little time that I did, he would be even more impressed. Uh, so here he is to say hello. Oh, he's right in the middle. I, uh, went along with our current Emergency Management Director and, um...
Say, Danny? The floor is yours.
Oh, oh, oh. Mark, I thought you were kidding me today.
I was joking.
It's a minimum of five minutes, maximum 10 minutes speech.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Um, you've had a chance to review my resume. Um, I also serve at, as a on-call EMT firefighter for the town. Um, I enjoy chaperoning time in my downtime. Uh, I live in Lanesboro, very, very, very close by, uh, Victoria Lane. Um, I think my resume can speak for itself. If anybody has any questions about my, my experience for the position, be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Is there a motion?
Sure, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the appointment of J.D. Heber as Emergency Management Director effective July 1st, 2024, pending the outcome of a pre-employment physical.
I'll second that.
Motion to second any discussion? Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. Make myself available anytime.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hedgeson, next.
Yes, unfortunately, Morgan McDonough cannot be with us tonight as she is working, uh, over the, uh, over the fire station. She has been the first person who Glenn recommended to me, actually. Unfortunately, she lives in Westfield, and when we were talking, um, we came to understand that that could be problematic if she lived an hour away. Um, however, she asked if she might be considered for a volunteer physician unpaid as Assistant Emergency Management Director. This will allow her, uh, she's actually pursuing a graduate course in emergency management.
Okay.
So this would allow her to participate in the emergency management of the town officially. Um, wouldn't cost the town anything, and we'd be doing her a favor by allowing her to, uh, to take an official role within the town.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe that we accept the appointment of Morgan McDonough as Assistant Emergency Management Director Volunteer effective May 13th, 2024, pending the outcome of a pre-employment physical.
I'll second that.
Motion second, any discussion?
So, I don't really have an objection to this, but, um, if the full-time, well, you know, the Emergency Management Director wasn't available, and she wasn't available, what would be the plan? I guess that to call them the chief of police, she'd probably save the officer, the town. What's the succession plan, I guess, is what I'd like to know.
Um, those considerations are covered in the continuity of operations plan that Glenn has presented, and you have about right.
Okay. Alright, very well.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. Uh, next. Mr. Hedgeson.
Yes, uh, the two temporary DPW laborers are, both of them are not able to be here tonight. One is in college and, um, and has to be away, assuming the other is currently in high school. And, um, he was involved in high school activities this evening. But, uh, interviewed them and recommended them, and they have all, they have both passed their four and pre-employment physical, so they're cleared to go. Um, but we're doing that effective next week.
Okay. Bud, anything to add?
Bryce Smith, ours last year.
Okay.
So if you did really good work, happy to have that.
So this is for Hannah Connolly and Bryce Smith?
Yes.
Right?
That's cool.
You're right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the appointment of Hannah Connolly and Bryce Smith as temporary DPW laborers effective May 20th, 2024 through September 1st, 2024.
For a second?
I'll second it.
Motion to second, any discussion? Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. Uh, next, for the DPW equipment operator.
Again, very pleased to present Mr. Daniel Boone, uh, who has, um, again gone through the, uh, all of the requirements we have and is ready. Oh, I'm sorry, we don't have a pre-employment physical back for you yet?
We do, but everything was in.
We do, right. After this was printed, sorry.
I'll go text them after that.
And I, I thought that was the case. Uh, and, uh, he's here, just care to say a few words about yourself and introduce yourself to the town.
Yeah.
Name's Dan Boone, I live in Florida, up on the mountain. Hope it's a different climate. Um, that's background in head construction and equipment. Uh, recently retired like five years ago as a critical care better medic for Greenville, South Carolina. Met her while down there, she was on vacation, and five years ago, we moved up here, and here I am.
Green.
I'm fine with the job with the town of Dalton.
Did you say Greenville, South Carolina?
Yes, sir.
Some of the best restaurants ever. And then the Greenville Drive, right?
Especially Melo Mushroom.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right, yeah, yeah, spent some time down there. Uh, well, welcome. So, thank you, any questions from the board? Is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the appointment of Daniel Boone as the DPW Equipment Operator effective May 20th, 2024.
For a second?
I'll second it.
Motion second, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. And do you go by Daniel or Dan or?
Daniel's fine.
Daniel, okay, we're welcome, Daniel.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, next, we have to open as a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we open, uh, the continuation of the EverSource public hearing.
And this is to install underground conduits and cables in front of 126 Barton Hill Road, and to install underground conduits and cables in front of 170 Barton Hill Road. And we had from some residents here have a few questions, so we'll go back to your question, and then we have a representative from EverSource.
Yeah, here.
Okay, your name, sir?
Brandon.
Brandon, okay, alright, well, why don't you come on up, come on up to the front, Brandon, you can help us answer somebody's question now.
Of course.
But are you engaged in it, so you?
Okay, alright, but let's go, just go ahead and open it up for the residents' questions.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Brandon, I didn't get to ask any of the female site missing. How is it determined that it was our property and in the Moynhans?
Based on the existing curvature of the road and the distance between point A and point B, essentially.
Um, the other question, we, we talked about, um, that huge rim bush?
Mm-hmm.
So what happens with something like that, does it have to be taken out?
No, it shouldn't. No, they'll do their best to dig around it.
Go under it or?
Yeah, under it, around it, whatever they need to do. Unless you want them to take it out, then when they're there with their machines, tell them to rip it out.
Like we're trying to take it out and put the, like, first thing, or then push it?
Yeah. Yeah, it's something that we can discuss.
Brandon, Richard Line, 117 was drive. It's 126 and 170 Barton Hill that are affected, right?
Correct, with anything new as far as installation, infrastructure codes.
Is there any other trends we're anticipating on Barton Hill or Kingsley Drive?
The whole neighborhood will be correct.
Okay. And how far are we going to, is there a plan? It shows how, how far into the property lines you're going to be trenching?
It will be within the curb line and then within the town taking, but typically it would be right along the curb, the existing curb line to minimize, uh... You know, a, a circumference to the property.
So we're in that town, that town, um, distance from the road in is how far?
I'm not, dude.
I don't, I don't know what it is up.
Each road is different, it's, it's center point to edges within town taking and all of our infrastructure is always within, within that barrier.
The traveled way is not always in the center of the road layout.
Right, right, but is it three feet, five feet, six feet, two, to get to the answer your question, right? I think that's what your question was, correct?
Somewhere in there, I think it's about, yeah, so.
Thirty from the center of the road.
Thirty from the center of the road.
That's usually the measuring point.
Okay.
The, um, you, you've been out there, so you've seen the perimeter?
Correct.
Well, last year Spectrum came through.
Mm-hmm.
They did an awful job of digging, no top settling, and, uh, reseeding.
Mm-hmm.
It's not getting the grass, is it? Is that the area we're anticipating digging up again?
Yeah, it'll be right alongside of that, so our, our, our contractors will definitely do a much better job of reseating and cleaning up.
We, we also have a large electrical box. It's at least 10 feet. And that, are there any drawings we can get to sort of make a sense of where this is? Make it, yeah.
Well, we have, the only new infrastructure that's going in are on these two, busting the property.
I'm just concerned because it's a good sized box, you know, is my whole front yard going to be torn up 10 feet wide, or is it just going to be?
No, they'll, they'll trench to the existing box and then trench out and regrade it.
Yeah, so you can never not to look along that.
I won't be the one there digging, there's, we have contact information for the contractors, and you'll see them in the neighborhood if you have any concerns during construction, if they aren't, you know... Putting, putting stuff back the way that they should.
With this hearing, um, I guess a question for the board and Bud, if you could, Tom and Andrew. Because we hear the questions from the residents and the answers from EverSource, can we have these documented as part of this application process to make sure that that communication goes to these other contractors? Which you are committed on behalf of those contractors.
Of course.
Public hearing.
Of course.
So we can document that, so the residents have something to point to when the contractors end up on their property and are not following that, uh, that guide. Uh, can we put something like that together, is that part of this process?
What would be our opportunity to, uh, include that in any word?
Well, I won't, I, I'll be a no vote until, if, if we can't do that.
I'm just asking what the opportunity would be, is that we would have in order to say, um, these are things that the residents of Dalton have requested and?
I, I can find that out, I've never come, come across that in, in a hearing as far as, um, who would answer to it, but I can absolutely find out.
I don't, oh. Just wondering if you really have a new one?
The new one hasn't been updated, but the, the spots that I spoke with you both about, uh, last week or the week before is the, the location.
I guess I can have that, yeah, in writing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. That's, that's pretty reasonable.
Well, it'll be submitted to the town for public, public record.
This is going to be another hearing before that, before it starts, so maybe?
Uh, I'm, I think the board's going to listen to your comments and it will deliberate on to answer that question.
I'd like to see an, an engineering drawing before just seeing those installed.
Um, Kayleen Whanahan, 170 Barton Hill Road, and I know you said that you're going to redo better than Spectrum did, but you didn't, net you personally.
Yeah.
People that destroyed our lawn last year, a good chunk of it, to fix a neighbor's issue, it was never fixed.
Did they leave a contact? I'm sorry.
Oh, I called three times. I called all supper and finally he went out and dug all the rocks up, got the topsoil, put it down. We had to fix it as the homeowners. And that, that was not something that we should have had to do, it wasn't even, if it was our issue, it still shouldn't have been done. But when it was across the street and they went into our lawn, I understand, so they're hooking into service going up Barton Hill, and it just happened to be us. So, you know, that's my concern, that being where it's going to be in the front lawn, I really hope that that will be fixed. And since our lawn is sloped, I did see that you have the circle on the ground, and I would like to be sure that that's where it's going to be.
That's where I moved it on the plans to get redrafted as far as the civil, civil works.
Is it, is it going to have to be a mound share to level it off?
Yeah, they'll, it, they'll, they'll build it to grade, so it will, it's not going to be as intrusive as what you, what you, what you would think that this sitting on the, the grade of a hill, they'll, they'll build it up and make it look appealing.
Across the front lawn, or are they going to just build like a little handle right there?
I'm not sure. I'm, I can attest to the, the contractors that we use, they, this hasn't been an issue for anything that I've dealt with as far as leaving a mess. You know, I'm, I can't speak for Spectrum or who they used, but we also have better communication, I think, with the customers as far as if, you know, you...
It was, it was, it was, it was EverSource. Did I hear the, the properties?
Oh.
They own property with Spectrum, but.
Oh, yeah, I, I can attest to that work, what?
Yeah, yeah, Spectrum dug last year in the neighborhood, but it didn't go on our yard because we had a new cable in front of our, who dug was EverSource. They had this electrical hook up for a neighbor that had a issue, that they tapped off of the, you know, posts were, were our yard.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, and it crossed the road, or the box.
Mm-hmm.
The contractor did a nice job the first day, and then he came back and dug it up the second day, and made a plus there.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Any questions, any additional questions for the audience?
Is there a date when it's going to start?
Well, when this gets approved, they're gonna, they want to start this summer, the funding's there, so.
Questions from the board?
So.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, there's some.
I guess I didn't give them the, stop, 170. So are, are we having another hearing on this to prove this?
Well, we can either approve it tonight or have it or postpone for another hearing.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see the drawing, because I think that should be part of the contract, right?
Yeah.
Uh, drawing that with the updated, uh, placement of the...
Yeah, your comment to get informed of all the debate on this particular issue, so, but I, I'm hearing what you're saying.
One quick question, 101 Kimberly Drive. Um, regarding the Spectrum work, is there somebody we can contact about getting that re-topsoil?
I guess through our town manager?
Just go do it.
We don't do it so well, is it? Well, that's what they say. Well, you're, you're not going in the same spot.
Right, it'll be relatively close, yeah, yeah.
I think.
I mean, I mean, the, the excavation damage.
If I can check back on the question, you're, you're, you basically want to file a complaint on the work that Spectrum did previously and repair that work, so I'll go through a town manager.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could go through the town manager, but I would suggest, depending on the timing of this work as well, I don't know if they'd want to come through and do anything there, if that's coming in right after, so.
Exactly.
That, but certainly still coordinate and talk with the town manager.
Alright, great, thank you.
Any other questions, your comments?
Thank you, Brandon.
Of course, thank you. Yeah, of course, that's my job, yeah. I'm, I'm happy we could come to a compromise that's less invasive to, to you folks.
Much appreciated.
Yeah, of course.
It's, it's a good spot for it.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I understand, um, did you go out and meet with the residents recently?
Yep.
Okay, alright, um, and I believe that we were interested in seeing an updated plan, uh, to be submitted to the board or the town, as well as an accompanying, uh, timeline for duration.
Mm-hmm.
So that the residents can have some sense of what to expect in terms of the interruption, you know, uh, their street. So, I would like to see that be submitted, um, I would be in support of continuing this, that we can get that information, continue this to one more, one more hearing where we have that information and we can make a final decision. One condition that I would want to insist being on, uh, as a condition of the special permit, is proper grading and reseating, uh, the affected areas, and, uh, and a final inspection, uh, by, you know, an official of the town, just to verify that everything's back to square. So those are my comments.
Any other comments from the board?
I, I just have one more quick question. What happens down the road if something goes wrong with somebody's service in the neighborhood, does that mean that we get redug up? When we don't, there's an issue?
No, it'll be in conduit, so there won't be any more excavation after this point.
Okay, board, any comments, additional comments?
Other than I, just, I could agree with what's Dan's recommendations.
But?
Yeah, Brandon, if you can be in touch with me, it's a town manager.
Of course.
Any, any other comments on that?
Mm-hmm.
Sure. Any other comments, just your board?
Okay, so what was your concerns of the cleanup time, duration of work?
Duration of work?
And, uh, a finalized civil plan to work, okay.
Shouldn't be too much to ask, and for this level of, uh, you know, disruption in the neighborhood and...
No, it is, but like I said, the, the, the design that was put in place has to be redone and re-engineered, so. It, it didn't get the turnaround on our end, listen.
Okay. And, and through the town manager and our assistant, I'd like a formal letter sent to EverSource, make this requirement as part of it for our next hearing. So if we don't have the material, we're going to continue kicking this down the road.
Mm-hmm.
So let's have a formal letter drafted for EverSource to take back to get all the paperwork done.
Sure.
Well, what other comments?
No. What was that? Initial, it was the first date when we kicked off public hearing. We have that, we have the records, I don't have that.
It was stuck a little bit. Well, we might.
Oh, March, I bet.
Okay.
Yeah, 90 days, usually, um, to make a decision.
Just for the record, our next meeting would have been on May 27th, which is a holiday.
Correct.
So we're in a break, uh...
Yep.
So it's unlikely we're having a regular meeting as scheduled on that day. So, uh, this could be pushed all the way into June. Why can't we meet Tuesday?
Well, June 10th, do we have a meeting on June 10th?
Yeah, um, but we, we, um, for the next meeting on the agenda, we just put down Tuesday after.
Yeah.
The day after Memorial Day is, is the meeting, I think that's the way it should be.
28th.
This Monday holiday, we just meet on. There's no reason we couldn't meet on Tuesday.
I just don't know that EverSource should be prepared, um, 15 days.
If they're not prepared, the answer is going to be no, you have to be prepared.
Well, let's reschedule, what I'm suggesting is let's reschedule the public hearing for a reasonable date that's within the 90 days that we have to make a decision.
It, it sounds like they haven't delivered the material we brought it previously asked.
They delivered an initial plan.
They didn't deliver the follow-up material, which was asked during the last public hearing, correct?
And so they?
Have not seen that, so you know the 90 days are there, and so we've got a timeline, we don't have to be triggered, the answer is going to be no.
Correct.
Got it. So is there a formal motion to continue this hearing?
Yeah, I'll feel a little... And, uh, before I made it, I'd like to suggest that we continue it to June 10th, so that's a month from now.
It's a better idea, yeah.
It's one day before.
Yeah, it's time, give everybody time here to get in their hands what they need to have in their hands.
Yep.
They have it prepared, as Ben said, submit a plan to town manager. Hopefully on June 10th, we can move ahead with this.
Exactly. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the EverSource public hearing, uh, to Monday, June 10th, 2024.
For a second?
Aye.
Motion to second, any discussion? Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstentions, motion carries, so we'll continue the hearing.
June 10th, moving to the next hearing, and hopefully we'll have the plans and the timeline that we can come to a decision.
It'd be, I think it would be everybody's decisions if they have this plan, Brandon.
Yes, sir.
Get it out to the folks before the June 10th.
Correct, yeah, what'll happen is...
They'll have it in their hands, they can study it and...
Yeah, what'll happen is like the initial...
Rolls around, we'll have all the answers.
Yeah, like the first initial meeting we have, it'll get sent out to the board to disseminate amongst the, the public as you guys need, so, and then you have record as well.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Enjoy.
Is there a motion, is there a motion to oppose the public hearing?
It's already continued, so, I, I think that motion, if you want, the public hearing, of course. Well, if you want, I guess, I can second that.
No, you, it's already dated, I'm old, so we'll continue the hearing to that date.
Alright, very good.
Alright, uh, firew, so we're in the ARP of funds. We got one for the fire warden brush truck.
And the fire warden is not here, so skip that.
Has there been any plan submission?
No.
Has there been any discussion about pricing?
That may be why we don't have a, but it's all, I would not know. Do you want to action on this request until June 10th?
No. You can make it again.
Yeah, yeah.
Make a new request, so.
We know your point, it's your end. Okay, fine, yeah.
DPW windows and doors.
This is something I put in capital, shuffled, made, uh, didn't make the, I mean, uh, this is the three windows, three windows. Pretty much that's the kids, one open, second one, secretary didn't know, because it was all... It was all good. Just.
Why? You lost me, bud. Why didn't it make capital?
Business.
Yeah, just. Frank, she went back and forth several times and it didn't make the town meeting. I, of course, take final responsibility for that, but I did check everything I was asking for with Bud a couple of times and I tried to make sure everything was included with that.
What's the cost?
So you are ready tonight?
Yes, I didn't. Um, yeah, probably. I didn't have the move. Sorry. I think it was eleven thousand dollars. It's three windows, two which two are making at the moment replace one.
I have it in my office if you want me to get it now.
I didn't have it because it was.
We haven't had time to review, so let's defer to the next meeting.
Right.
Any objections?
No, I mean, I'm in support of replacing the windows and doors.
Yeah.
I think that's obviously needed.
So defer to the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tom, an interrupt, take?
Yes, we have secured a grant to the Mass Tech Collaborative for fifty six thousand dollars for digital equity planning and implementation. With potentially more for implementation given our eventual plan. I'd like to thank the R C for their attention to the process. We've been working with them on a preliminary plan. The grant is first to complete a digital equity plan, a formal document. A master town planner to take the lead role in this project will develop a project proposal falls within the eligible nuisance funding under Mass Tech's implementation program in preparation for a formal funding application before July thirty first, twenty twenty five. So yeah, over a year to get the plans. Preliminary ideas include trying to expand low-cost Wi-Fi or go off the town fiber network to the Dalton Housing Authority units at Pine Grove and Pomori Manor. And also, the idea of a downtown Wi-Fi has been floated. I, John doesn't know this, but I've been talking with the PRA about but that sounds like a good idea at their meeting this week.
Uh, we don't have a lot of time left, bud.
No, no.
We'll try. We'll try it, Tom.
Yeah, just just to mention.
Oh, okay.
Just to get it on the radar. And we're looking for other ideas for helping serve the underserved. One of the things we'll be doing is asking people to do speed tests in various parts of town. We know River Run has reported slow speeds. I want to make sure we check out Green Ridge and maybe some other neighborhoods in town to see what their actual speeds are versus the advertised speeds. And so if anybody else has any ideas for that, please let us know. We received two bids for the Climate Action Plan, RFP, which were reviewed by the Green Committee after they selected Blue Strike Environmental as the most advantageous candidate. I opened the price proposals, which came in under budget, so I informed that firm that they were the current winner. And the reference text came back good, so we're moving ahead with that. I have sent to the state what I hope is the final response regarding the town hall renovation project's contractor, Kate Cutt-Bilders. Giving a failing review to a contractor is a serious matter, but both our former building and grounds superintendent and our architect thought that their performance was substantially substandard. I've received word from June Grow, our principal assessor, that she intends to retire. Assessor positions can be hard to fill, so we started advertising and contacting individuals who might be interested. I have also received word that the co-chairs of Board of Health are resigning as of June thirtieth. Certainly, if anyone hearing this knows of someone who might be interested, we'd be more than happy to talk with them.
Quick question on that. Are their terms up? And they're just not.
They're annual terms, so as of June thirtieth. Yes, that's right.
Okay, so they decided not to renew their term?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I have reached out to staff and a resident who spoke at town meeting about working on the structure of the fund for cleanup of condemned houses. Staff are enthusiastic and the experienced professional who spoke at town meeting will be able to assist. We're meeting this week to go over some initial steps. In DPW news, as I'm sure you know by now, Gulf Road is open. Lanesboro has been clearing and grading, including being so kind as to grade Dalton's end. I understand Lanesboro workers were approached by some Dalton residents who were out hiking or under the impression that Dalton had closed off road permanently for hiking, of which they tried to tell the graders. The graders let them know that this was not the case. We received only one bid for the garage roof improvements, and it was a hundred thousand dollars more than our budget. We're in the process of figuring out why there was such a difference, perhaps materials costs and overly optimistic initial estimate, a year's passage of time, or any other factor. We will rebuild. We don't want to change the specifications, so we need to figure out what additional funding we might need. The specifications were fairly.
What building was this?
The garage, the town garage, June garage.
What's our remaining ARPA budget?
About a hundred and it's going to be about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's one thing that I want. I wanted to have to next night anyways, to complete update on those projects. We will be able to reallocate some funds from projects that were completed under budget. So that'll be part of that report as well.
Do you re? Could we reallocate those funds with the special town meeting and reallocate?
No, no, no. The select board can do that.
For capital, that was approved by town meeting?
Yep, for ARPA funds.
For ARPA funds. Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Okay.
We still had to dispose of all these ARPA funds before you said we started.
We have to have contracts for, yes. We don't have to have a finished project. We have to have them legally obligated.
It's by the end of the year. Who's year? Our calendar year or that little fiscal year?
Calendar.
Our calendar. That's best.
Everyone's calendar.
December thirty first.
Not not fiscal year.
I am working with Bud on a plan for sidewalk improvements with the goal of having a cost estimate for a section of downtown ready for the next annual town meeting. In police department news, there's been a odor in the walls of the police department suggesting a dead animal and a mouse was spotted as well. The police department and building superintendent are addressing the issues and people from the state Department of Public Health's indoor air quality program will be visiting to review conditions. I understand there have been prior concerns about ventilation and proximity to a boiler. So we'll be getting a complete report. They'll be visiting this week. The police sergeants have voted for a union and affiliate with Mass with the Massachusetts Coalition of Police, known as Mass Cub. Their representative wrote that they would be fully honoring their contract with the town, which has another year to go. So we will not be negotiating that contract till next year. The other three union contracts will be negotiated negotiated this coming year. Police, Highway Cemetery and Dispatches. Finally, I'd like to commend the Dalton Police Department for very well-executed arrests and related activity related to a drug-related shooting in town, the first in recent memory. The hard work initiative and teamwork demonstrated were excellent.
Any questions for our town manager? I want to follow us, Tom. Where are we on the communication or conversations back to the local businesses that have the concern about Port of Health?
I've had another round with the complainants and another round with the health agent. I have to synthesize all that, get back to the complainants again, and perhaps at that point, take it to the Board of Health for any final resolution that needs to happen along with the try to get people together to talk to any remaining issues.
Any future agenda items?
I got one. I was approached today about the clock tower and the winding of the clock. Somebody who's familiar with the clock has wound it in the past and would be interested in doing that again, so. I can get you the contact information, Tom, and we can go from there and figure out how we want to work this.
Okay, that's our building superintendent who's in charge of that. One of the issues he's had is that it's been gaining way too much time. And he was going to have somebody come in and deal with show him essentially how to adjust to that. There's a weight that's essentially a bunch of rocks in a box that goes up and down, and that weight has to be adjusted. But obviously doesn't want to just swirl around, so he's agreement on that to advise among that.
I think this person will be able to help him out with that.
Yeah.
He's got it before.
Please, please sort of the information.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not just a question of volume, but it's calibrating.
Yeah.
Any other future agenda items?
Some are scheduled, meetings scheduled. When do we take that up at the end of May usually?
Yeah, yeah, that's a. That works for everybody. Any other future agenda items?
Thought that would be on June tenth.
That's fine. It's that's just as well or on the May twenty eighth, the Tuesday after Memorial Day.
Which is no reason to have that meeting now. On the twenty eighth.
Well, it depends on what comes up.
Yeah, if it gets up, yeah, but not. They want to disrupt people's Memorial Day weekend, have an unnecessary meeting.
Well, we'll see what the agenda is. If it's fall, then we'll add it.
If I take off the DPW windows, doors and the firewarden brush truck and ARPA review.
We'll cross.
It's better on that stuff, I would say.
Well, we'll cross that bridge when we see the agenda.
Yeah.
Any other future agenda items? And it was not anticipated forty hours before the meeting. Now your remarks to the select board.
I got one just real quick because I was out today holding a sign and I had like three or four people come up and they were just excited about the grant money for Orchard Road, bud. So I just want to, once again, thank you for the hard work on that. They were ecstatic that the town was able to loan you the million dollars. So thank you again.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Any other remarks? There are none. No announcements. Annual car permits, tax stickers and recycling-only car permits are available for purchase at the transport station and on the town's website. There are numerous committees and boards with vacancies. Please see the town website for more information or reach out to the town manager's office. The Dalton Housing Authority has one vacancy on their board. Must be a Dalton resident. Please contact Sue Gregory at six eight four two four nine three for more information. As your electricity bill too high, the town has contracted with Colonial Power to provide electricity plan for town residents who takes advantage of joining with other communities to have a larger customer base for negotiations, which has resulted in prices lower than current EverSource prices. Please note, this may not always be the case. For more detail on opt-in and opt-out, visit the town's website or call the town manager's office. Town Dalton currently has five job opportunities.
Four, sure. We just hired the EMD. That that shouldn't be on.
Hardtime COA van driver, DPW equipment operator, hardtime library page, and a principal assessor. Okay. Visit the town website or contact the town manager's office at four one three six eight four six one one one, extension two zero two for more information. And the next meeting, the next regular meeting is scheduled to take place on Tuesday, May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four at seven PM at the senior center with an option for remote participation. And could I have a motion for executive session?
Mr. Chairman, a move that we go to executive session for reason number two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, ordered to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, namely the DPW superintendent and town manager, and for reason number seven, comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant, any major requirements, namely to review and approve executive session minutes from April eighth, twenty twenty four.
Yes, thank you. Motion second. Roll call, bro.
Well, no, we're not going to return to executive to.
Figure your session.
To regular session.
Well, should we, if we approve the town manager's changes in his contract? Should we come back to open to announce that? Or do we defer that announcement?
Do you have to have a sign? Do you have to have the signing?
Do you have to sign and put it open?
Right.
Right? So if we agree to it tonight, then we have to come back and open and sign it, or we kick it down to the next meeting?
You kick it down and then just sign it to the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm not returning.
I I believe the DPW superintendents should be thrilled with this.
Good.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Good night, Tom. Thank you.